Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Roll call, please.
Bunton?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Dempsey?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Crapp?
Here.
Menzger?
Here.
Announcements, acknowledgements, communications, or reports from anyone on the board? No? Okay, seeing none. Adoption of the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
I would like to amend the agenda.
Okay. What would you like to do, sir?
I would like to take item 9B and item 9C, nope, I'm sorry, 10A, 10B, 10C, and put it on the regular agenda.
So, 10B will be 9C, and 10C will be 9D.
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Support.
Okay, roll call.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Menzger?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Okay, public participations, it's time you may address this body, all we ask is that you give us your name, residential address, and that you adhere to our three-minute rule. And all the other rules that are sitting listed here. So, please come forth.
I guess somebody has to be first. Rick Block, I live on Cambridge, 207 Cambridge, they had a couple of questions. Public participation plan, known as P3, I think, is that the same thing as the master plan?
Public participation plan.
You voted on a master plan to accept their proposal.
Right.
Is that the same thing as the public participation plan? Because I was looking on the website, I can't find the master plan anywhere on the website.
We'll let Brian answer that one.
Yeah, the master plan was adopted on 9/6, I believe, it was going through final edits, and I actually just personally uploaded it to the website today under the community development tab.
I guess I must have overlooked it because I went through that and I didn't find it. Just curious, I mean, I'd like to be able to have a copy of it there, just to look at it, to see what's there. I noticed that a great many of the things that the city does, or adheres to, or presents aren't available as written documents, or electronic documents, like the quarterly reports, I don't see those anywhere. How do we know that what you said you were doing last quarter, this quarter you say we're doing this, how do we know that you've accomplished what you said you were going to do? And we have no way of knowing that. Last question for you, this is kind of rhetorical, it's kind of pointed, just don't throw anything at me. Tonight you're going to be asked to approve an invoice for street repairs. Do you know what streets are being repaired? I couldn't find anywhere on the website of the city where, you know, we're going to repair streets here, here, and here, or this is our plan, or whatever it is. I mean, the sidewalk repair, I saw a list of those one time, but I haven't seen a street repair list, I don't know, and quite a few of the items that are in the tabulation of bids, it's one of the pages that's in, I think it's page 23 of the thing, there's quite a few items on there where one person says, "I'm going to supply a thousand of these," the other person says, "I'm only going to supply 300." Three or four different items are like that. Are these people really being evaluated on the same plan? I mean, I know that you don't do that, there's a contractor, there's an engineering company that does that, but if they're asked to repair streets, or whatever, in numerous places, why is what they're supplying and what they're doing so vastly different?
Anyone else? All right. Well, come on.
Gloria Heller, 260 Cass, before I get to my main issue, I see charities listed on the back again that have been moved to the business agenda, but let's get the charities out of the streets, out of the intersections, and I do have a question, somebody brought up to me when we were talking about it today. Since the city, if the city allows these charities to be standing in the street and collecting, and somebody hits somebody, let's say I'm driving and I hit one of the Goodfellows or collectors or something, and I get sued, can I pass that on to the city?
No.
No?
No.
So I guess you don't want to put them in the intersection, do you, in order to protect your residents?
I think if you wait for the rest of the meeting, you'll find out that the city has a plan relative to the solicitations in the street that will be discussed when the item comes up for discussion.
Okay, I hope, because that last one, that, whatever that odd, that new group was, my god, they literally come up and grab your window and your door handles and everything else. And so if you drove away, you could drag them away and hurt them. The other thing, is the last meeting I was at, whenever it was, because I've been working some nights since, and I got right down to the end and ran out of time, and I wanted to mention, and now I can really mention it, across the street from me, I've got the biggest ugly mess you've ever seen in your life. It's bad enough that behind me I have a truck terminal and a cabinet shop, but now, out front, besides the Cass traffic, I've got the first of five buildings going up, and we've gotten to enjoy the sounds of structural steel, and the hoots, and the howlers, and the beeps, and the whatnot. And I have to say, our planning commission has miserably failed its primary goal, which is to make of a city a nice place to live. In my area, it's about anything but. And concomitant with that, a couple years back, when JB Cutting was overlooking for their yes votes from the commission, so that they could get their proper designation and then come for their tax abatement, which we gave them, even though they told you at the time they were a profit-making corporation, that for the last four years had increased their sales and their profits 25 percent a year, this stupid group still gave it a tax abatement for nine to 12 years. Eighty-seven hundred and some dollars a year for each one. Oh, my god, and you wonder why we don't have any money. There were two commissioners at that time. One was, is no longer with us, he went back, Jack Johns was a commissioner, and I just saw him recently, because I went to a county full board meeting, and before I went, I went to see John, what's his name, at the planning commission, and told the county that if I was a resident, I'd prefer to get out of our face. Mr. Campbell also.
Is that the time? Thank you. Anyone else? All right. There were no administrative responses, so we'll go on to approval of the minutes, please. Need a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes from September 6, 2016.
Support.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Menzger?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, General Business, 9A, request approval to renew video service local franchise agreement with AT&amp;T Michigan. Need a motion?
Move to approve the uniform video service local franchise agreement with AT&amp;T Michigan, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same.
Second.
AT&amp;T Michigan has given notice to the city of Mount Clemens that it seeks renewal of its cable television franchise, and has submitted the attached uniform video service local franchise agreement for approval. The same has been reviewed by Neil Lado, the city's cable attorney, who has approved the form and substance of the agreement, and advises that the commission approve the same.
Okay, questions? Commissioner Menzger?
I just had a question about the fees on page four, it says the fees shall be one of the following, and I wondered, do we have any idea what fees they have paid to the city for the last several years of this contract? I'd like to know kind of what we're making off this. It's under item number six, fees.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, perhaps Linda knows, I don't know the exact numbers, but I can tell you that the fees are set by state law.
Right.
We no longer have any negotiation, or, when they first started, and started granting cable franchises in municipalities, they were negotiated with the municipalities. A number of years ago, the state passed legislation where they took over, and they essentially set what these rates could be, these percentages, and we don't have much to say about it. However, I would point out that he did get them, Mr. Lado, did get them to agree to an additional, on page six, of the franchise agreement. He got them to agree to 1 percent on their peg fees, item number two. They had zero in there, and he did get them to agree to, or he demanded that they pay 1 percent, but I don't know the actual numbers. Linda, mine?
I don't have that information with me, but I can certainly provide that, I know we did just receive a check for thirty-some thousand.
Cool. I'll be willing to wait until you, you know, just see your email.
And we get it from Comcast, you know, I mean, it's, all of them are supposed to be paying the fees, Comcast, WAF, and AT&amp;T.
I think the first year AT&amp;T wasn't paying, when they first came in.
Yeah, I think that might be.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Ford?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Menzger?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Okay, 9B, approve purchase and payments of invoices.
I move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
Okay, any questions? Commissioner Menzger?
So, on page three of the invoices for vendors, there is a payment to One Beacon Insurance Group. Because of the description, I'd like to pull that from the, from this payment of bills until we can have an executive discussion, or executive session to discuss this ongoing claim.
It's on page 19, if anybody's looking.
Yeah. So I guess that's my motion, my motion is to withhold this particular payment until we have an executive session to discuss it.
Yeah, you can pull it, I don't know what there is to discuss. We have a, my understanding is we have a $10,000 deductible on our liability policy, and that that $10,000 first goes towards the cost of defense, so you're going to pay attorney fees up to $10,000. You know, if your question is, why are we paying something when this hasn't been resolved or finalized, that would be the explanation for it.
I would.
And we used to have, I can also say we used to have, I don't know when it was, three, four years ago, when we were with the state, we had a $75,000 deductible for each claim. We had some slip and fall pieces that were settled for $3,000, where we had $36,000 in attorney fees we paid. So, this last insured deductible at least is reasonable. But that's why, that's what they are talking about, deductible portion of a claim, and it's for cost of defense.
I would just like an update on that claim.
Well, then I think what we should do is, is request that the insurance company, the attorney assigned, who is handling the case, that we invite him to give us, to come here and give us a status on the pending litigation.
And do you not, do I need to make that motion?
No, I think, I think the administration can just, well, just get a hold of them and try and get them at one of our upcoming meetings to tell you where it's at.
Does that mean we can leave it on the agenda and vote on it?
If that's, if that's what the Commissioner Menzger's concerned with, I, I, does it?
If that's the way you want to go, I think I can live with that.
I was going to say, it sounds like you want an update of what's going on.
Yeah.
But this is basically, it's been going on so long, we've probably reached that $10,000.
Oh, I'm sure we have.
We probably should pay that, since they have been defending that, but to get an update of what's going on, I agree.
But it's capped.
But.
It's capped at the 10 grand. Now, if they have a, if this goes on, they have a trial, it's in federal court now, I mean, maybe the attorney fees are 100 grand, but our contribution is capped at 10.
Okay, then, for matters of clarity, then, I will withdraw the motion with the understanding that we are going to ask the insurance agent or carrier to come in.
The attorney.
The attorney to come in and give us an update on this claim.
Sure.
Okay. You can do that. Any other questions?
Yes.
Yeah, relating to Mr. Block's question, have there been streets designated for the asphalt street repairs?
Mr. Woods could give us.
No, really what was done is, this was just a bid process to find a contractor so that we can do these repairs. The majority of these asphalt repairs are going to be for where there was a water main break, or a sewer repair, or something of that nature, where it's just been cold patched for the last couple of years. So, this was just a bid process, this is approving the contractor for that bid process. During that bid process, we did lay out some different type scenarios. Are we going to spend that much money? Probably not. We don't really have that kind of funding to do this project, so, again, it was just to find bid pricing through a contractor, and to, so, basically tonight, you're accepting that contractor as our contractor to do asphalt repairs.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Stay there.
Commissioner?
I just wondered about the price per ton difference for salt. We're at $40.32 a ton, and some communities are at $36.79 a ton. I think the most expensive I found in the spreadsheet was $64.85, and I just wondered, what is the rhyme or reason, why are we paying 40 when some communities are paying 36?
And I'm not exactly sure on that, that's all through the state, so, all of our salt is purchased through the state, so, I don't know if it's the trucking difference, or if it's the amount differences, I'm not sure. So, do you know that?
We are a little early on the, a lot of people wait to do their salt contracts until later, so I'm sure you may be looking at last year's prices instead of this year's prices, because this is a prospective use of it, and what you're, you might be seeing online is what everybody paid last year.
It says 1617 right here.
Okay.
Okay. That's from here.
Just one quick question, do we still have salt left over from last year?
We do. Yeah, we have about, our salt barn holds about 1,200 tons, we have approximately 800 tons in there, so, we use about, depending on the winter and the snowstorms that we get, we use anywhere between 1,200 and 2,000 tons a year.
So we don't have to pay for that that we already have?
Right, we paid for that last year.
So we're not going to have another winter like last year.
I noticed some of the lower bids are schools, too, you know, versus cities and that, so.
And it looks like some of them are like Wakefield's only paying $36, that's got to be a really tiny community.
All right, do we have any other questions? Roll call. Oh, did you have another question? I'm sorry. Oh, was that you, Kathy Almond?
No, that was me. Yeah, where am I? Okay. Hill?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Menzger?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Okay, 9C is 10B, request for the Knights of Columbus to conduct charitable solicitations for their 2016 Tootsie Roll Drive on October 7th and 9th, 2016. Need a motion?
Move to allow the Knights of Columbus Council Number 744 to conduct charitable solicitations for a mentally impaired fund drive, or Tootsie Roll Drive, from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM on October 7 through 9, 2016.
You have a second?
Support.
Okay. Sir?
The Knights of Columbus Council Number 744 is seeking permission to hold a mentally impaired fund drive, or Tootsie Roll Drive, from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM on October 7th through October 9th, 2016, with proceeds being given to the organizations that assist the mentally impaired. The locations proposed are Northbound Grashit and Cass, Southbound Grashit and Cass, Grossbeck and Cass, Market and Southbound Grashit, and Cass and Main Street. If approved, a certificate of liability insurance naming the city as an additional insured will be required prior to the event. Solicitors will be wearing bright vests, clearly identifying them as Knights of Columbus, no additional city services are required.
Okay, Roger?
Okay, my question, or my stipulation is, in order to accept this, then we have to designate that they cannot do any solicitation in the streets, we've already established that. Can I say that?
No, we haven't done that yet.
The administration is going to be bringing to you an update in the next month or so, that they will be recommending that we, based upon the recent Attorney General opinion, that as of January 1, 2017, we not allow solicitation in the street. Both of these events are now, they will occur before January 1, but this will give these organizations, and all of them that formally request this, an opportunity to decide how they're going to solicit without being in the street. And our ordinance, by the way, our ordinance prohibited it, always has, but, like most communities, they, it was never enforced, and there was somewhat of a misinterpretation because it was charity, that it didn't really apply, et cetera, in the Attorney General's opinion. Not that that is law, but it's persuasive. It's not like a Supreme Court case, you don't have to follow the Attorney General, but it's well reasoned, and under state law, they've just written an opinion that anything that interferes with the normal flow of traffic, including charitable solicitations, is prohibited under the Uniform Traffic Code, state code. So, the administration will be coming with a proposal later this year.
So then, the only way we can prevent them from being in the street is to not okay the request?
Yeah, these two requests, yes, because we haven't, there hasn't been the proposal put before you, that the administration is recommending that you turn, that you not allow this in the future. But, Brian can add to what I'm saying, but he thought it would be in the city's best interest, as well as these two particular organizations, that they given, it'd be given some advance warning, in other words, effective January 1, from that day forward, we're not going to allow it anymore.
Is it possible to ask them to go back and resubmit, indicating that they won't be in the street? Is that a possibility?
Sure.
Okay, I'm through.
No, I assume they can do that, you know, but whether they want to do it, I don't know, but you can, you can turn it down on that basis, and if they want to resubmit it, they can resubmit it.
Commissioner Menzger?
Is there a requirement from the state or the federal government for 501(c)(3) organizations to give them some kind of notice that we will no longer be allowing solicitation in the street?
No.
No, okay. It would be just courtesy?
Sure, and these, these two organizations that are on the agenda this evening have been doing this for a long time, a number of years.
Countless years, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, in light of the fact that they've been doing it for so long, I think it's only fair to give them warning, to go ahead and let them do it this year, and then give them warning that it won't be allowed after January.
And that it finishes out the year, because we did have people in the spring.
Right.
And it finishes out the rest of the year.
Well, and when we turned down the other group, then we were, we were told that we really can't do that, because of, we had already set a precedence, without changing the ordinance, right? So, it could be, we could be putting the city in a liable situation.
Well, yeah, because you can't, you're not going to be allowed to pick and choose, you know.
Right, so if we turn them down.
The federal, yeah, federal courts, you know, made that pretty clear, just because you don't like this group, or this group is questionable, which, you know, and I can tell you, the Attorney General opinion came about because of that.
We weren't the only ones who didn't like them.
A group like that, or, and similar groups, where, where, you know, it's pretty obvious that the majority of the funds they collect are not going towards a charitable purpose, they're going towards salaries for the organizers of it.
Right, but in this case, I mean, so if we do deny it, then we are really doing what we did the last time, and.
Well, we didn't, we ended up, we gave it to that group.
Right, we did, because we.
Right, and what Lisa's saying is, we've already given a number in 2016, she's just trying to be consistent, we would finish out 2016.
Because we set a precedent, right?
And then 2017, nobody can do it.
Right.
And, and I think, you know, that the groups, like these two groups, if they can't go in the street in the future, they can, hopefully they'll be able to, to collect pretty close to the same amount on the street corners, you know, somewhere where, without the traffic, but I don't think the marginal groups will be, will be able to do very well soliciting on the street, I mean, on the sidewalk, without you being trapped in your automobile as they pound on the window.
At least, let's hope.
Yeah, let's see.
Commissioner Bunton?
I thoroughly understand where we're going with that, so I'm good with it, but I guess I want to ask another question. Does this mean that once we okay a procedure to happen, then we are stuck with doing that for everyone that makes that same request?
Yes, they're not going to be allowed in the street.
Can't pick and choose.
Can't pick and choose.
Yep.
We need to be very, very careful as to what we okay.
No, we need to be very careful about picking and choosing, that's where you're going to get sued.
Right.
You have a policy.
You don't have to worry about finishing it.
You have a policy, or you don't, you know, that, that's the whole problem, is that there are ones certainly that you would like to turn down, but the federal courts say you can't, you know, you either give it to, you know, all charitable, or you don't.
You know, I'm not even talking about the charity, I'm talking about anything that we do as a, we set up a precedent, then we cannot vary from that precedent, no matter what, so I guess that's my now understanding, I thought we had the authority to think that in the better interest of our community, we'd be able to say no to this group and yes to this group, based on what they, what they present to us, but I see now that that's not the case, so I've learned a lot.
And it's going to be merely that we're going to enforce our existing ordinance, which says you're not supposed to impede the traffic.
In the first place.
And it's unfortunate that the bad seeds, bad whatever, ruin it for the good.
And it's not just us, it's communities throughout the state are seeing the same thing.
Commissioner Menzger?
I just wondered on that, on the courtesy angle, good charitable organizations like this, that are based in the city of Mount Clemens, do you think that before the end of the year, we would send them out a written notice of this, that effective, because these are great charities.
We could, because there aren't that many. We didn't have that many.
Right, there's not that many.
I would think anybody, anybody that's done it in the past, we would send them a notice that we're not going to be able to do it in the future.
The other thing is, you don't want to turn this down just for the reasons you said right now, but I know for one thing, the Goodfellows, it's a big portion of their budget is selling the raspberry papers, so, I think I checked one time when we talked about seventy percent or so of your budget that supports the Goodfellows. So, I think that if we do this, which we're going to have to, I think maybe we should help, maybe find some alternatives to help them sell those papers in other locations other than the street. If all of us pull together, maybe we could assist some of these organizations that are good organizations and help find areas that are traffic, have the traffic that they could sell. Because I know for one, the Goodfellows, it's a big portion of their budget.
I'll make everybody at work buy one.
So I think you're right, we need to, you know, notify them so they can prepare for next year. Okay, so we have nine C, roll call.
Crop? Yes. Mansur?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Okay, and then ten C is nine D, which is a request from Mount Clemens Goodfellows to conduct a charitable solicitation in the public right-of-ways on December ninth and tenth, two thousand sixteen. Need a motion?
Move to allow charitable solicitation by the Mount Clemens Goodfellows on December nine, two thousand sixteen, from nine AM to five PM, and on December ten, two thousand sixteen, from nine AM to two PM.
Support.
Do you want her to read the, do you want her to read the description of this, or we're just going to?
Just, just vote.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mansur?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crop?
Yes.
Consent agenda?
Motion to approve what's left of the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Roll call.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crop?
Yes.
Mansur?
Yes.
City managers report.
Please note there is a work session scheduled for Monday, September twenty-sixth at five thirty PM to discuss the Utilities Department Capital Improvement Plan. The next issue of the Clementine's Newsletter will be delivered in October inside the Journal Newspaper. The Downtown Development Authority, along with Pettit Print Inc., will host the Downtown Mount Clemens Oktoberfest on Friday, September twenty-third, Saturday, September twenty-fourth, and Sunday, September twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen. The festival will feature authentic German music, food, and fun for the whole family. Call five eight six four six nine four one six eight for more information. The Macomb Cable Network and the Mount Clemens Public Library together have been awarded a two thousand sixteen State History Award in the media category for their Mount Clemens History Video Series, A Minute of Your Time. The award that will be presented at the Historical Society of Michigan's conference next week. Congratulations to Deborah Larson, Patrick Linneberry, Darren Roberts, and all of the students for working together to produce this outstanding series that promotes the local history of the city in preparation of the city's upcoming bicentennial. Please take a minute to check out the videos on Bath City Beats YouTube channel and on the Mount Clemens Public Library website.
Any questions, City Manager? Seeing none, okay. We'll start with Commissioner comments. Mr. Ford, Commissioner Ford, do you have any comments this evening?
Not tonight, no.
Okay. Commissioner Button?
Okay, I do have a few. First, Thursday, September twenty-second marks the first official day of fall, so those of you who have been waiting to get the pumpkins and the change in the colors and the trees and the cooler weather, it's right on its way. And for those of you who don't like it coming, there's next year. Anyway, again, I'm going to say congratulations to Pat Linneberry and Darren Roberts and the Macomb Cable Network and Deborah Larson of the Mount Clemens Public Library for a great achievement in winning the two thousand sixteen State History Award in the media category. Their series, A Minute of Your Time, presented, presented one-minute videos of Mount Clemens area history. Congratulations for your recognition of your great work, but we always knew you guys were great anyway. Thanks to Laura Crop for the detailed report on the DDA's September meeting. Apparently, it was suggested by one commissioner that the DDA present to the city commission a quarterly report. Unfortunately, I cannot recall that this suggestion was voted upon by the city commission body. I feel that the DDA has always kept us informed of their activities. As I am greatly opposed to micromanagement, I do not feel that it would be an effective use of their time to have to prepare an annual, or I'm sorry, an official report each quarter. Along with the bimonthly reports to the city commission and the television viewing public, the DDA is available Monday through Friday by phone, by email, by, for questions and concerns. Laura, if you wish to provide accounts of the DDA's meetings on your own volition, I would sure, I mean, I am sure that no one would have any objections to that, but I do not want this to become a mandate without the city commission voting it into existence. So, I think very much that the DDA has been open and they have continuously let us know what was going on, and if there's anything that you have questions about it, they're always open for you to come along and ask. So, that's my question, or that's my comments for the night. So, Commissioner Wisdom for the night. The old law about an eye for an eye leaves everyone blind. Think about that one. Martin Luther King. And with that, we'll say good night.
Commissioner Mansur?
I brought up the fact that I thought it would be a great thing for the DDA to give quarterly reports. The DDA actually agreed with that. We did not vote on it, it has not come before the commission, and that would be at an organizational meeting, I believe, for a vote. So, so that's where we are with that. I attended the art party last Thursday, downtown Mount Clemens. I want to say that Phil Gilchrist did a fabulous job, he really made that his own. It was much changed from last year with seating and dancing and a great band and the decorations I thought were really awesome. And I want to say that I won the bid on the Sleeping Bear Dunes tile from Whispering Frog. This is great. I also want to give Phil a shout-out for grants that he's received. The Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs, he's a grant recipient for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen Fostering Community-Based Cultural Development. The Art Center has received seventy-eight thousand dollars in three grants. There was a total of five hundred and fifty-eight applicants for that. This is a branch, the Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs is a branch of the MEDC or the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. So, that's really quite an accomplishment to get those grants out of five hundred and fifty-eight applicants, so I give all credit to Phil for that. I also wanted to say congrats to Darren Roberts and Patrick Linneberry for winning the History Award for their video series. This award is the highest recognition by the Historical Society of Michigan that they've won, and I think that's an awesome thing. I want to say that, you know, my heart goes out to New York City and the twenty-nine people that were injured in the bombing on Saturday. It goes out to the residents of Seaside Park, New Jersey, who were trying to do a good thing for our veterans by having a charity run, but faced a pipe bomb instead. And it goes out to the residents of Saint Cloud, Minnesota, and to the nine people who were injured, stabbed, just because they were shopping at a mall. This happened all, one week after the anniversary, the fifteenth anniversary of nine eleven. The city of Mount Clemens hosted a ceremony down in front of the Fallen Heroes Memorial on Sunday. We remembered a couple of Mount Clemens people. Chief Edward J. Sawitzky from the Mount Clemens Fire Department, who died in the line of service on January thirty, nineteen twenty-nine, and Robert John Arons from the Mount Clemens Police Department, who died November first, nineteen seventy-three. This was an awesome ceremony, and I want to tell you that everyone stood for the National Anthem. I watched Jack Johns, who was down there, help a senior citizen get up out of his chair because he was struggling, and then hold that man up throughout the National Anthem. Everyone stood, everyone stood. They stood for the two thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven people who died fifteen years ago. They stood for the three hundred and forty-three firefighters who died. They stood for the twenty-three police officers and the thirty-seven Port Authority officers and the six thousand people who were injured that day. They stood so that a football player can take a knee. America is a great country, and we should all be proud of it. And those are my comments tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Crop?
I too will echo the other commissioners when I say congrats to the cable network on their State History Award. I'd like to thank everyone who attended my coffee talk this month. I'm, will plan on doing the coffee talks again next month, on Tuesday, October eleventh at nine thirty, and October fifteenth, nine thirty AM, both at John's Family Grill, and I hope everyone has an opportunity to attend. I too attended the art party. I enjoyed it quite a bit, I liked the new layout as well. It was, it was a great party, and congratulations to everyone who, who organized, I know that takes a lot of hands, and, and they did a great job again this year. I just wanted to respond to one of the citizens' comments about the new construction on Cass and about the noise and the disruption, and I, I live on Bellevue Street, and maybe two years into moving onto Bellevue Street, there was a very large project that took the entire Southbound Greshit Bridge. It's essentially three doors down from my house, and they took the entire bridge out, pilings, everything, and they drove new pilings in, and every time they drove in a new piling, my nineteen twenty-five house shook. But you know what? I got a beautiful bridge to look at afterwards. Is it the most glorious bridge ever? No. But is it, is it a new and improved structure? Absolutely. Progress sometimes is painful, and everyone's opinions are going to be different on what progress means. But I don't, I don't understand why we complain that progress isn't happening, but then when it does, we complain. So, that's just my, my two cents on that one, and I'll get off my soapbox like I tend to get on every week at some point. I'm looking forward to Oktoberfest, and especially, when is the ceremonial keg going to be?
Saturday at five PM.
Saturday at five PM. The crops may be there. I also would like to mention that I regularly attend DDA meetings, as I attend SEMCOG and as I attend a lot of different meetings, and I know that everyone can't attend every meeting, as I can't attend every meeting, but the meetings that I do attend, I don't mind sharing the information, and so I have no problem with that. I have no problem at all with that, and I don't think of it as a burden necessarily, just don't skin me if I miss a meeting. I also wanted to, I forgot my train of thought here, sorry. Give me a second, sorry, it's the beginning of school. I guess that's it. I, I don't remember now what I was going to say in my last thought, so thank you very much, and that's all for tonight.
Commissioner Hill?
I would like to add my congratulations to the other commissioners, to Deborah Larson and Darren Roberts and Patrick Linneberry, and the students. The one-minute presentations on the Mount Clemens area history are very interesting and very well done. It is fantastic to have people working to inform, preserve, and promote the unique history of Mount Clemens. And speaking about good things going on in our community, it was great to see a recent article in the Macomb Daily about the Blessings in a Backpack program that's taking place at Seminole Elementary School here in Mount Clemens. Although the article only mentioned two churches, this project is actually sponsored by five Mount Clemens churches to make sure that children have enough food to eat on the weekends. Children who qualify for free lunches are eligible for this program, and the backpacks are filled by volunteers on Wednesday afternoons, and they are distributed to the children on Friday afternoon. There are three hundred children at Seminole who qualify for the backpacks. Most of the volunteers are from the participating churches, but other volunteers are always welcome. And I understand that Mayor Dempsey volunteered last week, so thank you. Meyer is a big supporter of this program and contributes both food and money. The rest of the cost is shared by the participating churches through fundraising efforts and some grants from other businesses. It is wonderful that these churches have cooperated to make sure that, that kids don't go hungry on the weekends. And this is a real need in our community, so thank you to the churches and thank you also to Meyer for their help. Thank you, have a good evening and a great week.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, last week there was an article on the front page of the Macomb Daily that led to some comments and confusion that the city of Mount Clemens had a help wanted sign up because there was basically nobody here. And I would like to clear up that we are in excellent hands with our acting city manager, Lisa Borges, and that a new confidential secretary for the city manager's office will be starting soon. A account technician and finance department has began, interviews are being conducted for a new co-enforcement officer, so we are in good hands and the ship is being steadied in the right direction, so with that, I say thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to say, Lois, that I was really impressed with the backpack program, how well organized it is. I mean, it was, I think, an hour maybe that we got done, everything was organized, and I know there's people that come in before that to set it all up, but everybody just kind of goes around and sets, it's, I mean, it's very organized, and I think we're very lucky to have something like that going on for the students and that, but...
Can I just say that the Mount Clemens Optimist Club also does Blessings in a Backpack?
Oh, okay. I knew it was the churches that, you know, Optimist Club's involved too. Very good. It's always good to have more people.
Yep, you betcha.
Okay, and with that, I think we'll have a motion to adjourn.
So.
Support.
Roll call.
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crop?
Yes.
Mansur?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Adjourn.
Adjourn.[1230.33]